Yeah.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting order at four oh three, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. This is the Committee of the Whole Me. And I'd like to start by reading the Aboriginal Land Amendment. Town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on Treaty Six Territory Nation Region Number Four. These are the traditional territories and ancestral lands of the indigenous peoples, including the Plains Cree First Nations, the Tsinghua. Winning Whack, Rocky Mountain First Nations, Stony, Sutina, Nakota, Dennisu, Salto, Mount Me, Miff. And many other communities that continue to origin the land on which the Town of Hinton was established. With this settlement, the meeting is called the Order. Are there any changes to the agenda that anybody has?
Sir, if I could, administration would just like get opportunity under reports from administration to introduce the new Director of Corporate Services.
Okay, perfect, thank you. With that, can I have a motion to accept the minutes? The, uh, the agenda?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Okay, can we vote all in favor, please? All opposed? It's not a carry. We have anybody for citizens minute with council?
No, we don't.
Good in delegations or presentations? None. Uh, then would could we start administration with reports from administration, number five oh one Beaver Boardwalk Rehabilitation Funding Opportunity?
Sir, just if I could, just prior to moving to five one, uh, very proud to introduce to council. Our new Director of Corporate Services to the committee, excuse me. Um, so Alicia Borbo is has been with us since August second. And he is rapidly taking the reins on the twenty twenty-three budget. And coming to, uh, coming up to speed with her team in corporate services and stepping into some improvements that we've been planning. In the corporate services area with that, I'm just gonna allow Alicia a moment to say hello and introduce herself further.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm very, very happy to be back working for the Town of Hinton. And as some of you know, I was here up until twenty fourteen and at that time took my professional career in a different direction. So I'm bringing back some new strengths, ideas, and it just feels like home. So, thank you.
Welcome. We're happy to have you on. Welcome.
Thanks very much.
Forward to having you. Dave, could we start with five, um, Beaver Boardwalk Rehabilitation Funding Opportunities, please?
Thank you, sir. Members of the committee, we're on page three of your agenda package. And I'm going to do turn this over to Heather, and she's going to take us through the Beaver Boardwalk Rehabilitation Funding Opportunity.
Thank you, CEO. I'm going through to committee. Uh, this report is in front of you today as we made aware of a funding opportunity through Freya. This opportunity may result in us being able to rehabilitate the entire boardwalk area. So very promising. This item has already been, um, before the Beaver Boardwalk Committee Oversight Committee. Um, we've done a number of exercises to arrive at this point, such as condition assessments and a prioritization exercise. Um, where the committee members themselves, along with the engagement that they've done with the public, have identified which areas of the boardwalk um, should be prioritized. So if we need to do a phased approach for this project, um, that that will be identified through the priorities that they have provided. So ultimately, today admin is looking for some direction with respect to the recommendations that came from the committee. Uh, those are included throughout the report, and you will see administration's notes with respect to the recommendations from the committee in blue throughout. I also have with me today Chad O'Shanock, our Arena Park Supervisor, uh, who's here to help us answer any more technical questions that committee may have. Um, that's it for me unless councillor Stash wanted to add anything with respect to the work the committee's been doing.
Um, if my name is clear.
Please.
Yeah, the, uh, committee has been working very hard on coming up with the recommendations for council. Had a couple of quite long meetings for a public committee. But, uh, yeah, they resulted out with some very clear and solid and productive beneficial recommendations that have come to council today. And with that said, I do just want to take a quick unit to thank the committee for the work that they did and being willing to put in a couple of terribly long meetings to be able to, uh, get these recommendations so that, um, as way would be able to get this report back to council in a timely way. So thank you to the committee members. And that's it. Thanks.
Questions or recommendations? Don't be shy. Could I ask you a question? Um. So. I see section U and V is prioritized pretty low. And that's one of the sections that really is really important. So is that section still needed or relevant?
Uh, thank you councillor Taylor. Here's the remainder of the committee. So you may recall that, uh, one of the items that the committee had to accomplish was some public engagement to determine whether the community thought there were any redundant or duplicated sections. And we did bring a report back to council on that. Where both the committee and the community have said, no, each each of these areas are, you know, important for their own, um, reason. Um, that particular area with U and V, that section gets quite low down towards the water. So you're able to kind of interact, um, with the wetland there. Um, so though it is ranked lower, I think the reason for that was largely because they wanted to focus on that main corridor section. Um, but U and V would be addressed through, um, a full funding, um, would be included in any designs that go forward.
Any more questions?
Sorry, just to clarify then, uh, it would be included if there was funding. So what's the, what, what is the process to arrive at that? And what would be included if I wouldn't?
Thank you councillor Leberish. Yes, yes, please. Um, so through to committee, perhaps I misspoke. So the entire, uh, the entire boardwalk would be included in the funding application. Um, the priority ranking simply if we had to phase the project over five years, that would just give us our direction there.
Yep. Any more questions? Sir, a motion? Yeah. You just go ahead.
Uh, I'm just curious, the, the Free, uh, um, Resource Improvement Association Alberta. What kind of timeframe, like how, how is that, like, we're applying or how does that work, like?
Yeah, so I'm, uh, thank you councillor Haas. Um, somewhere in the report, there is a schedule. Um, however, what we've been told by by Freya is that ultimately they take applications, um, twice a month. Um, so as soon as we have our package together, we can get in the queue for that. Um, and then from there, it can take up to three months to receive word on our funding, which would put us about September-ish, October, um, getting us right there for a winter construction season.
And if I may follow, wh- what kind of amount are we looking at potentially?
Um. Freya was unable to give me an amount. However, they provided us the direction to go bold with our design.
Okay. But, if, if I may, please, that's not gonna include, because we've already got funding for round two, right? So that we've got that covered. It's just, this is now all the walkways and everything else.
Everything Beaver more walk there.
Excellent, okay. Oh, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think just to follow up on Miss Lee's comment, um, even even since the preparation of this report, another federal grant has come to light that is up to a million dollars that is stackable and would be eligible. And it is the opinion of the town's engineering firm very eligible for the town and for the Beaver Boardwalk. So the work that's proposed here in anticipation for the Freya grant uh, would align itself quite well for this federal grant. Now unfortunately, the federal grant, it doesn't require a, a council motion, but the deadline is very short. It's the end of August. So as we work with, uh, with associated, associated is willing to work with us to put that grant application in as part of the larger project here in in preparing this for the Freya. So, um, in terms of the dollars, there's potentially a fairly significant opportunity for the town.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just, just to add to that, though, um, the communication from the committee and what the committee expressed is that even if we wind up, you know, by some clue to wind up with a bottomless pot of money, where there is no end to it, it's not going to be overdeveloped. The, the committee has made it clear through their, through their support of the previous directions from the Beaver Boardwalk Committee and through their recommendations that they're adhering to the original vision of the BBOC uh, to, to, uh, balance a fiscally responsible, safe outdoor recreational and educational experience with minimal impact to the natural landscape. So a lot of the, in a lot of the cases, they've actually minimized the impact to the wetland even less than what was recommended by the original, uh, BBOC. So I just want to throw that out for assurance that no matter how much money is available, it's not going to be overdeveloped. Thank you.
Any recommendations? Any motions? Any direction? Please?
Uh, I wanted to give everybody a chance to speak to it if they chose to ask questions, but yeah, I'd like to, uh, move that to committee direct, sorry, the committee direct administration to incorporate the recommendations of Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee, excluding additional BBOC recommendation C into the design plans for the Beaver Boardwalk Rehabilitation Funding Application and direct administration to bring the recommendations to the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting for approval. That's the recommended action, Jen.
Any questions or comments on that? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a big thank you to, uh, the committee. Uh, anytime you could potentially find, uh, resources that, uh, would take away from taxpayers having to invest in this. And, uh, this is what we strive to do. So a big, uh, thank you for those long meetings and potentially we'll be in a much greater place. So, uh, I'll be in favor of this. Thank you.
Yeah, well. Quite to say, this recommendation makes sense to me, so. Uh, anybody else?
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm definitely gonna be in favor of this, and I appreciate all the, uh, the recommendations, um. Yeah, uh, I mean, and, and you know, from Wayfair signs to, uh, I, I really like the idea of a reserve policy for specifically for the boardwalk maintenance reserve. I think that's, uh, I mean, we've had conversations about a reserve policy, but I think, you know, past shows we, we need to have specifically for this area. So that's great. Um, I also noticed and, and, uh, I've, I've had an opportunity to watch, uh, you know, because they are public meetings and they're on YouTube and posted, but, um, I see too that there's a recommendation and I saw, heard that there's always been some, still some discussions of removing the bridge, but it's been addressed by the BBOC that that's not, they're not in favor of that. So taking that off there is great. Then we can move forward with that bridge, that area, uh, without, uh, you know, having further discussion on that. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm fully in favor of this. So, thank you.
I just have one question. So you're gonna move on to the next stage with just like detailed engineering cost estimates, putting the package together for free. What happens if that package is like really, really expensive? I mean, all the recommendations look good to me right now, but I haven't seen the price hit right.
Yeah. Thank you councillor Taylor. Uh, I did receive, so in the report here, you'll see that we had an estimate of twenty thousand dollars to put the whole grant package together um, and send that, send that off. I received, um, our actual quote, uh, last night at the Game Clock. Um, the total is thirty-two or thirty-seven thousand. However, that includes seventeen thousand dollars worth of, um, engagement that the consultants would assist us with. The town would still lead that initiative. Um, and so that has some deletable items in it, but all of that, those funds are, are available to us within our operating funds currently.
What I really meant was what if the, all the detailed engineering costs and all the work that we want to do is just so large? It doesn't look feasible to do that in five years. Is there something?
Do you mean from the perspective of Freya?
Yeah.
Um, so as I mentioned in the report, um, we are able to phase that project over the course of five years. Um, so they will either give us an entire lump sum or year by year, um, based on what they feel they wish to fund. So when that comes back to us, whatever pot of money we do have available, and then of course additional grants that may be available at that time, we will go through the, the prioritized list and create tender documents based on the prioritization that the committee completed.
Thanks.
Right. So that thirty-seven thousand dollar package then, that's the exclusion of all engineering. That's just to write this proposal?
To do, uh, quoting, quoting of our entire area of what it would take, including some engineered concepts, for example, certain corners, what those should look like. Um, it includes the engagement, it includes environmental work, liaising with AEP, including a site visit, um.
So, so engagement though, I guess, I mean, it goes from twenty to thirty-seven. Can you engage it to have them assist us in engagement?
So, um, we're using the term assist because administration has received negative feedback in the past by allowing our consultants to kind of run our invasion for us. This is our municipality, so we want to be out there leading that. So they included the Tiffany top price so that we could work with them to decide what we actually needed from them. We may decide not to do a survey, but to do an open house, in which case I would need them to create us a survey so that they could apply for it, right? And it's kind of an itemized list that way.
Okay. Any more comments before we vote? Good. We're gonna see consensus on this motion to carry forward to the council. All those in favor? Those opposed? Yes, uh, motion's carried forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's move on to the Truth and Reconciliation Day, uh, item five two, please.
Hey, Mr., uh, Mr. Chair, through you to the members of the committee, um. Following a discussion item that was presented by administration on July twenty-sixth, uh, the Committee of the Whole Administration, a verbal direction from council to prepare an information report regarding options for the recognition of Truth and Reconciliation Day or TRC here at the Town of Hinton. Uh, TRC Day is commemorated on the thirtieth of September annually, and, uh, there was some interest expressed by a coun- a councillor in engaging and involving stakeholders from, uh, local indigenous communities. Uh, councillor Haas expressed interest in receiving more information from administration uh, regarding what options are available. And this report outlines some of those options and, uh, some good work provided from our manager of HR. Um, just in terms of the analysis section, you'll see the breakdown, um. And our thanks to the municipal district of Greenview Number Sixteen. They, they did a survey this spring uh, in Alberta and yielded the following summaries from thirty-two municipal participants in the survey. Um, so seventeen of those communities in Alberta are observing TRC Day. And, uh, in those seventeen, one will swap the Easter Monday floater, which is a pretty standard practice to have the Easter Monday floater. They are now swapping that to observe with no increase in overall days off. And one will swap one of the Christmas floaters. Uh, four of the municipalities that responded to the survey will not observe the TRC Day. Uh, one is split, that's the city of Spruce Grove, with union employees observing and salary employees not participating. Uh, ten were still considering their options with one being likely based on their two thousand twenty-one participation. There is no mandatory awareness training in place, however, some education is supported and encouraged. Uh, you do have the table bottom of page eleven that does summarize those communities, both their twenty twenty-one observation and what they're anticipating for twenty twenty-two. Uh, sir, I won't go through each of those, but that is available for, uh, for counter, for, for the committee's consideration. Uh, the government of Alberta, just as a, as a heads up, that they did not recognize it or take it as a stat holiday in two thousand twenty-one and are not planning to do it this year either. Um. Other municipal options or alternatives, we see at the, uh, city of Laduke, the town of Banff, uh, they're, they're conducting a ceremony. Uh, Orange Shirt Day is a fairly common opportunity, and, uh, that is something that some municipalities are looking to do. Uh, the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, uh, identified the Orange Shirt Day serves to promote awareness and education of the residential school system. Topic page thirteen. We do see that, uh, by removing the Easter floater and instead closing operations on September thirtieth and forcing a day off for employees, the town, uh, evades any adjustment for costs. That's the same. It is important to note that for any employee that does not celebrate Easter, the floater serves as an opportunity to use that day off for a religious or cultural celebration, meaning to that individual at another date and time. Um, some communities are recognizing or establishing September thirteenth as a permanent statutory holiday. Uh, one of those is the city of Calgary, the other is the state Grand Prairie. Uh, some are engaging in, uh, internal communication and education, and you see those communities there. Uh, Red Deer County and Mountain View County are taking a look at involving staff in professional development opportunities through the University of Alberta in, uh, Dino Studies. Uh, middle page thirteen, administration has, uh, outlined four possibilities, uh. One would be Orange Shirt Day, whether we encourage our staff, team members to, uh, acquire their own and bring their own orange shirts and wear those on September thirtieth, or whether the town were to pay for those. The two options are there. Uh, the town paying for all employees could run as high as about twenty-seven hundred dollars. And, uh, we believe that most people probably have orange shirts, and that seems to be what a lot of other municipalities do, which is they just encourage people to wear their own orange shirts. Uh, there is the possibility of an internal lunch and learn, as some of the other communities are doing. Uh, the Treaty Six Life Raising Ceremony is one that, uh, I participated with when I was at the, uh, Town of Stony Plain. And it is one that's very, uh, well received by the First Nations community. Um, however, it, it's surprising, but September thirtieth isn't that far away. And to try and arrange, uh, some of the the attendance of some, of some of the important members, if we may not have time for this year. And then the fourth option being professional development, Indigenous cannabis certificate and, uh, University of Alberta courses. These are ones that we can, uh, utilize and allow staff to attend and participate in if they wish. Um. You do see the implications and the risks outlined in page fourteen. The, uh, really it comes down to the recommendation. And this year, administration recommends the committee accept this report for information and direct administration to prepare a business case to be included in the twenty twenty-three budget securing funds to recognize the September thirtieth twenty twenty-three Truth and Reconciliation Day. This would allow us time to budget for it correctly and prepare for it, uh, just over a year from now. The second option would be that, uh, the committee accept this report for information. So with that, uh, I have to answer any questions the committee may have.
Questions, please?
Well, I guess I made a comment is, um, when we talked about recognizing this day, I really thought it was gonna be a community recognition of this day and not a day off, free tea, sugar, lunch. And it just doesn't. I don't know that that meets the uh, expectation um, of, of, of me, but I don't care because I'm just some white honky guy who lives here. And, and I would like to have a conversation about what we might do as a community in a meaningful way to actually, um, um, impact that day, uh, and to do it for citizens beyond our employees here. Their citizens as well, but I guess for me personally, that's what I would like to see.
Please. Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you councillor Leberish at all. I think it's the timing of it. Can we pull it together in the budget to do that? I, I think, but I think we can still personally, I think, take some initiative as an organization to, um, to recognize that day, you know, to show the community that we also support in reconciliation and everything. I, I think personally, I think the, the ra- the raising the flag ceremony, I really like that idea. I think we should have that flag up at all times. Um, but I recognize maybe the timing, but I, I think the raising of flag could happen at any point. Um, you know, um. I, I like the idea of education. Uh, honestly, that's a, a big part of reconciliation is understanding um, our indigenous culture, understanding, you know, the history of it, understanding present day things. So, um, I, 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 I do, uh, like the idea of the, uh, professional development. Um, but I, I, I would see it more as a mandatory. Um, you know, uh, and I'm, I'm looking at my own larger organization, but it's, you know, being part of HS, it has been mandatory and continues to be. Um, so I, I would, I would support that. Um. And of course, the Orange Shirt Day as well. I think, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm not for the day off. Uh, I struggle with that because, I mean, we take the day off and we go, we go do our family stuff, our lake stuff. It's a day off. It's, it, it's, in my opinion, unless you actually do, you know, celebrate that reconciliation, I don't see that. Um. I don't see that as, as a, a way of doing that personally. I think, you know, being in our, in our, in our offices and and recognizing that day in other ways is a, is a much better way. So, thank you.
Please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question to administration, when I was going through this, um, I have no problem supporting the recommended action of seeing a business plan, but do, does administration want us to kind of go in and seek consensus on certain things that the business plan will incorporate? Because the, the thing I, I don't want to do is through the budget process, then spend an hour, two hours on defining what that business plan would be, what would be in. Because the one thing I do support strongly, and we can go through the list, is I, I want a ceremony. Like, the ceremony part is important, uh, uh. And there's other ways, uh, to, uh, I don't necessarily support the day off, although I, I believe we will be going towards that at some point, uh, provincially. Uh, but we can have all our staff there. We have the ability to say this is going on this day and staff doesn't have to stay here. We can all go there. So to me, uh, if we're trying to seek consensus, what I would want to see in the business plan is, uh, money is put towards a ceremony, engaging the community, being together and putting on as, as a, as a, something that's comparable Canada Day. What do we do for Canada Day? Similar, we're, we're celebrating this day as a community. So the fun should be directed towards that. And then whatever is left, then we kind of look at other things that we can add. But this will be, I, I believe in, in, uh, in open document, in the sense that we'll be adding to this every year. But in twenty twenty-three, what I would like to, to get is, is, uh, a Canada Day type of celebration for this day. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
My turn. Yeah, I kind of see this like, uh, the National Day of Mourning for lost and, uh, workers that have been impacted by accidents. That's, that's the sort of thing I would see. I'd be really reluctant to put a, uh, uh, any ideas forward as to what would be appropriate until we, like, went to the say the Friendship Center and asked them what they, they would, they, they would see. Like, I, I'd be wondering if maybe one of the strongest things that we could possibly do is, uh, tie into their activity and for us in, uh, you know, council as many as possible and management to show up to their, their activity that they're putting on that to me would be a strong statement as like, orange shirt, lunch, mandatory training, a day off for everybody. So there are other ideas that aren't here, but I think all those other ideas start with talking to, uh, uh, somebody who's affected by this, which would be the Friendship Center. I think a motion might want to consider that thought. Anybody else?
So you'd like to go? I, I just, I guess a question for administration because we're talking about the twenty twenty-three budget, um. What recommendations do you have for this year? What recommendations do you have for this year um that we could? You know, we're talking about. Yeah, a a larger event. I mean, I agree with Counselor Taylor. I mean, if we're looking at it's too late in the year to try to put something together that's meaningful. Uh going, you know, along with the Friendship Center and moving, but are you looking for that recommendation this evening as well, like looking at? What can we do this year, but then moving forward a business plan for the fall for the twenty twenty three budget and forward?
Mister Chair, through through you to member hostile and all of the committee members, um. I I think to a certain extent, we've heard feedback or I've heard feedback uh through the course of this discussion on what twenty twenty three could be. Um administratively enhance the recommendation. We just feel there's not enough time to give it proper care and consideration. For a a a a full blown municipal. Action in a month and a half time.
Right.
Um that doesn't mean we couldn't encourage our our members, our our team members around Orange Shirt Day. Or possibly reaching out to the Friendship Center, certainly in conjunction with anything we may do in two thousand twenty three through the budget process. I would look to be engaging the local Aboriginal and First Nations communities on what their thoughts would be. And what they would like to see and then bring that back to council as part of the business case that says. In consultation with the local community and those most affected by the TRC. Administration is recommending we consider the following. It is not, to the best of my knowledge, and I've not heard. I've not heard this, so he he when the Kia prepared this, we were we were providing. Everything we could find across the province, so it is not our intent to look for a day off. We're not seeking a day off. I I don't disagree with the comments I heard about the importance of. Truly recognizing the importance of this day versus just spending another day at a lake launch or shopping in Edmonton. Um so I would look to be bringing something back. Properly thought budgeted for twenty twenty three. Doesn't mean it's got to be significant budget or it might be dependent on that engagement with the local community on what that looks like. And what our participation could be. Um this year, we would rather do something. A little less ambitious, so to speak, but that's done respectfully and. And 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 identifying the importance of TRC. And rather than doing something at the last minute and not well thought of.
Oh, please go ahead.
So thank you, Mister Chair, so. Um I guess my question to administration with that being said, do we want to pull this away from the budget process? And just have a report so we can budget. An amount of money. Not focus on this during the budget process. To me, the these this is like any other report. This can come in February or March. Or whatnot to see what the event would look like. Uh and and kind of separate the two. That's my thought, like. Otherwise, we're going to have an extensive conversation again, as I mentioned prior, like other items, and to me, this. May not fall into it. If we properly budget for it, we can then get a report and see what that day looks like later. Uh in the term, uh again, my expansion of budget process, once we have more reports and and cases to decide. It takes away from uh uh the 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 other greater. Uh issues that we might have with the budget twenty twenty three, so that's just my thought. Of maybe reformatting uh what the recommendation is uh for council to consider. Uh that's what I would more than likely support.
Did you want to put a motion forward, just taking out the middle six or seven words in there? Administration recommends committee accept the report for information and direct. Administration to prepare a plan to recognize September thirtieth two thousand. Twenty three group reconciliation date, is that what you just said?
Yeah, I would uh forward that that direction.
Did you get that, Jen? Thank you for that.
Great motion.
And who made the motion?
Uh Stuart Michael, I mean.
Marcel Michaels.
We'll wait till we get it written. May not be appropriate for me to speak to it, sorry.
And if I may speak to it, as we we await, I think this gives us an opportunity. Administration can talk to stakeholders, the Friendship Center and have an idea. Of what the budgeted amount could be, uh because we are going to, I've heard other counselors talk, getting that. That having that communication on what that day should look like, uh this gives us that time to 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 have a. High level target of what we want to do and then give it the appropriate time. To me. Uh it's probably two other meetings. It'll come to the committee of the whole, it'll come to council and we'll get that event, I think. Properly represented that day, so to me, I appreciate the flexibility uh and this. This will help us on on two ends for the budget process and to give it the the right amount of time to deal with. Uh in the first quarter of two thousand twenty uh three. Thank you, Mister Chair.
You put it up so Marcel can make sure that he's got the word in.
Prepare a report, if that's okay. And I'd like this to be a report coming to council. And I think that's, I'm good with that. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. I don't think it should start with administration recognize, so.
Thank you. And I'm good with that.
The committee recommends that. Maybe accept this report.
I think it's just the committee accepts accepts this report for information.
Yeah, I'm good with that, Mister Chair.
Yeah, I guess my question to Mayor Michaels or to committee. So this report would become before us, before the budget discussion, to have a conversation or is it?
If I may.
Yeah, please.
No, this is, a- again, the budget process, we have many line items that. Um will have a a budgeted amount, but then unless we unless it's the will of council, if we want to see a report and task administration to work on this, which. I would assume would be. You know, many hours of work to to. Uh I I would be fine dealing with this in the first quarter of two thousand twenty three and seeing that report later, as long as monies are allocated. But we could have that target number. Fairly close and if we talk and communicate with the Friendship Center on what could be done and. Yeah, that was that was my intent. I I wouldn't want to rush it, but uh again, that I'd I'd be open to what council thinks about seeing this in the fourth quarter of two thousand twenty two.
Please go ahead. Yeah, so that was my my question because, I mean, I just, I agree with you. It's just as long as we. Capture it in the budget conversation, so that we're not. You know, because we're talking about a lot of different things and then we get into it and then all of a sudden we get a twenty thousand dollar. Hypothetically, you know, event, but we don't have the money for it. So, but I I guess that's where I was kind of at is is. You know, if we had a good idea before the budget discussion. Then we can at least then earmark certain amounts of all of it, because we ran into that. This year, a couple of things with the Mountain Music Festival and things like that, so I just want to make sure that. You know, we have enough information that we can budget enough so that when the time comes, we have the money, so.
Do you have a comment? I I I did, sir, and and I do appreciate committee's thoughts on that. Because I I would not want to go into twenty twenty three with no budget available for any sort of recognition of TRC, yet I am also hearing. There's not really a desire to have a full blown operating business case in the budget, so my thought would be, I heard placeholder would be. We would likely bring to council in the budget. And and I'm going to suggest based on. Polling some other municipalities, get a sense of how much they're investing, figure out, based on population, it's X per. One resident and and provide some of that really basic level of council, simply so we can put a number into the two thousand twenty three budget. And I'm rec- I respect that you want to work the details out in two thousand twenty three. But this way, we're not trying to come back to council seeking the entirety of it after the fact. If we could at least put a modest number in to get us started. And then confirm what that is, I think we can do that without creating an operational business case.
But are we getting, like, we're gonna do a bunch of business cases in this upcoming. Budget session like we did the last time, like, I don't, wh- why? Why wouldn't we do this the same way as we would of any of the other business cases that would come? See, I thought the motion was saying we were gonna get a report ahead of time or, but wh-. Why wouldn't we treat it like another business case item in the budget?
Um thank you, Mister Chair. Uh we could, but there are many things that don't come. And if 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 we want to add this, there are many things we don't. There are line items and expenditures. We only get a a dozen or so, but the town does how many uh uh to live like deliverables each year, so to me. Uh like, we we didn't get a report on some of the business cases. Uh that administration or under Mister Engadell's department, who what he expends on, so to me, it's it's a philosophical thing. If we want to start adding. All of the events for business cases. Then. It opens a door for other, I I believe, other things to come that then we'll we'll be looking at forty fifty business cases, so I'm not against it. Uh I just know that it muddies the conversation and it takes extra time to start looking at every ten thousand dollar. Budgeted item, but again, I'm I'm open to the will of council for that on. Where it's placed, my preference is for us to to deal with it after though. Thank you.
My comment would be, we don't even know what it's gonna cost, if anything at all. And I assume that's gonna start by you talking to the Friendship Center first, not maybe other communities. They might say, here's something that you can do that's meaningful for us, that's uh. Just includes everybody, including Aboriginal, Native people, and it's what we'd like to do, might not be something that costs money. Be a. Something else.
Good either way, but.
Okay, any more comments? Okay, we're gonna vote on the motion if we could, please, or the the consensus for direction. Uh committee accepts this report for information and direct administration to prepare a report to recognize the September thirtieth two thousand twenty three Truth and Reconciliation Day. All in favor? All opposed? Thanks. Okay, let's move on to the Hidden Communities Sustainability Plan, please. Hey, Mister Chair, through you to the members of the committee, page sixteen of your agenda package. The Citizens Advisory Group, on behalf of the town of Hidden, prepared the Hidden Community Sustainability Path Plan. In May of two thousand eleven, it was adopted formally by the town of Hidden on May seventeenth, two thousand eleven, and it's attached in your report. Uh there was a time when the federal new new deal for cities and communities required that municipalities create and adopt. The integrated sustainability path plan. Um or is the case here a Hidden Community Sustainability Plan? This was to qualify and to receive. Some of your federal gas tax funding. In uh May two thousand and nine, town started the development of this. We subsequently went out to an external consultant and drew in a citizens advisor group and the completed work was done in over a two year period. Uh the final plan confirmed the five themes identified. Culture and educator, culture recreation, education and wellness. Governance partnerships, local economy, natural and built environments. Um. The plan included many ambitious uh recommended strategies and actions for each of five themes. And it included the following twenty forty vision statement, prepared for the town of Hidden. Uh where they saw the community in twenty forty as a more diversified economically, culturally and socially, more vibrant. By celebrating the unique cultural heritage, small town charm and amenities, more balanced by achieving innovative economic development while sustaining. Our ecological, human. Economic and social resources, excuse me, and more engaged with local authorities, citizens, businesses. And visitors working collaboratively, thus allowing everyone to enjoy a quality of life. The uh. Hidden Community Sustainability Plan is now over eleven years old. Uh the majority of the proposed strategies and actions have not been pursued or completed. Uh specifically, the plan contemplated the establishment of a uh. Community Sustainability Plan Monitoring Committee, made up of representatives from the key partners. As well as representation for the community as whole, uh which would be responsible for the completion of regular five year reviews. Of the plan, uh this, these five years reviews, including the most recent. Would seek to to modify the plan as may be necessary, returning to council for adoption of the newly reviewed and updated plans. It appears that since its adoption, the the community has largely failed to reference the plan. In that it's decision making through annual budget processes, or even to that, to that matter, the creation of the plan CSP monitoring committee. This is not a statutory document, uh it is uh, so. That would be similar, so statutory document would be the town's uh. Municipal Development Plan, land use bylaws, et cetera. Um this is a more of a philosophical document. Uh it's an ambitious philosophical doc- document that's not been implemented or maintained over the past decade or more. Uh my very preliminary analysis of other Alberta communities has been unable to ascertain whether other communities are. Maintaining or possibly abandoning their adopted CSPs. Prior to making a final decision on the future of the two thousand eleven Community Sustainability Plan. Administration would complete this analysis and determine any grant funding implication if the town did not have an adopted. Community Sustainability. Few comments there under risks and liabilities, the options presented, uh I'll I'll just read into the record the one coming forward the. To the committee from administration, that would be the committee, direct administration, prepare a report for. The identified date meeting of council with a motion to rescind the May eleventh, two thousand and eleven. Adoption of the Hidden Community Sustainability Plan. Uh sir, I'm available to answer any questions on this or any discussion on the options and alternatives available to committee at this time. Questions, please? I can start the ball rolling. On, say if you don't consider the plan. Both the decision packages that we get have a CSP section in. So that every time you make a uh um a decision. That refers us to the CSP plan, which is like a twenty thirty year vision for what people thought for the town of Hidden. So in that sense, every decision is referred to the CSP. We get all comes to us to look at that and see whether it's part of the CSP plan. And then and then consider that. If you're you're approving something that wasn't part of the twenty to thirty year vision. So just wondering if that's gonna, we. Isn't that what we currently do? Sir, through you to the members of the committee, that happens, it's not consistent, so some reports will have uh. References and and will reference the Community Sustainability Plan. I've written a number of uh of reports myself since arriving and I've. I've not regularly reviewed it or accessed it or referenced it in my recommendations. Um as I said, the. Uh the the recommendations vary from really high level philosophical to, quite frankly, very expensive and uh. Not budgeted for by the community and so if there. As as a non statutory document, it's it's and it's not dissimilar to the communities where, so I. We we did one in Spruce Grove, Stony Plain and Parkland County, all all of them had CSPs. And they were quite ambitious and they tended to get uh. They didn't tend to get always followed because they tended to be fairly. Fiscally quite ambitious, thanks. Comments or questions?
Well, I guess I'll make a comment, um is uh the community did actually form a CSP monitoring committee at SEAC. And that was the original job of SEAC was to keep an eye on this. I mean, the challenge, as I see it, is this thing um was a thirty year plan, but we're ten years into it. We've done absolutely nothing in life. And see it, um SEAC's original job was to keep an eye on all the stakeholders and anything to do with the plan and see where they were. And and contributing their portion of plan. Now we're ten years down the road. My question is. Does the, is the community in exactly the same position as it was ten years ago? Because we haven't evolved this. Plan at all. A lot of the stakeholders have stepped back from this plan. Um I think we're maintaining a bunch of branded words here for absolutely no reason at all. Um and if we were able to do, and 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 it's just that it would require. Starting all over again, in my humble opinion. Um and and if. This were to go away, um really, the the purpose and intent for SEAC then is dealt with as well. So um. I was involved in SEAC uh early on, but. That was, that was uh deemed sixth early on in the process, so.
Please, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this one, I'm, I'm torn in between. It's, we have to figure out if there's the input. Or there's the will uh to, to, to. Retouch up this document. This, this brought great value. Five years ago, we should have. Updated it. Riverfront Park came from this document. That, that, that was one big push that they had. It, uh, there was an appetite to do so, then we created the pilot project. There, there are many things that came from this now. Is there the energy in the community and from council in order to uh update this? And to me, that's where I'm torn right in between. I think there is some appetite to update this. Cause this is a driving force to administration and then for council to um. Uh, move forward with certain projects. So to me, that's, uh, I'm just thinking out loud. Is, is there an appetite? Or have we lost touch a bit with uh the stakeholders because we delayed it so long? So. That to me is my challenge. Uh, I wanna hear from the rest of council to say, are we, are we updating this or are we? Putting it to the side and focusing on other things or other ways to accomplish what this is set out to do. So, thank you.
Close rule session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So. The, the reason this is challenging for me is the town of Hinton is the only stakeholder who's still actively participating in the CSP. And. With absolutely no offense intended, I feel that, that even the town's participation isn't much more than lip service to it. And it's not been reviewed, it's not been, it's not been dealt with. CAC hasn't dealt with it. CAC hasn't. Engaged in any meaningful way with CSP for as long as I can remember. And unfortunately, I, I feel the CSP is a little bit of a flawed document in. In the fact that there's an expectation of a judgment of accountability from. The stakeholders that form part of it. And that has always been challenging for an independent uh. Organization of, of citizens to. Gauge accountability on private industry and uh municipal organization. Hasn't always been received very well. So I think there's some, some flaws with it anyway. Um. I think it's time for the CSP to go by the wayside. I don't think it's relevant anymore. But that said, though, I would look to administration in the absence of a community's, community's sustainability plan. What are there other guiding philosophical documents that municipalities have? For. When there's a transition of council for them to refer to as some type of a guiding document other than. Just the previous council strategic plan.
Through you, sir, to the members of the committee. Um, there is, so it, it should be and, and. I, I'd have to take a look at the document to make sure it remains uh consistent and, and. Aligns with the direction of current council. I hope it does, but would be your municipal development plan. So that is a document that uh. New members of council should be reviewing, they should be analyzing, taking a look at it. We should be ensuring that it's getting regularly updated to meet the requirements of the act. In many ways, the Hidden Community Sustainability Plan. Has many aspects of a well-done municipal development plan. The difference, again, as I mentioned earlier, is between a statutory and non-statutory document. Um. Unfortunately, historically, the CSPs were, everybody was doing them because you needed to do it to get your money from the federal government. Um, in my analysis, in, in my brief analysis in the run-up to this report. I couldn't find anything online and in a very quick contact with my network. On anybody that's really looked at me since two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. So we're not the only ones apparently that aren't maintained and that haven't kept them going. I, I do wanna be sure that I'm, I'm, I'm bringing to the attention of the committee. It would be my desire to ensure there's, and I don't think there is, but I don't know this for a fact, that there would. We would not want to rescind the motion if it affected in any way our grants. And, and I, I've been doing this now for ten years and, and nobody's mentioned community sa- sustainability plans. But we would not want to rescind this if it in any way affected any of our grant opportunities. And we make sure that were the case before we brought something back to council.
Hence my question. That's why you wanna write a report? To double-check, to make sure that that's not the case?
Would want to make sure. So here at committee, we're simply looking for the uh. The, the will of, of, of committee. Uh, but when we bring it back, I would, I would be in that position because I wasn't able to ascertain. But I would want to make sure the implications of rescinding. The connect, the motion adopting the Community Sustainability Plan and make sure it doesn't affect any of our grants. Again, I'm. Fairly confident it, it won't or that it doesn't, but I wanna make sure of that entirely.
And as part of that report would uh include a recommendation on uh what the future of CAC is?
It certainly, it, it, it could and uh, and we can make sure that that's, it's part of this as well.
Right. Okay, um. Come to it always.
Yeah, you know, I. I mean, look, I looked through the CSP again and reviewed it and, and quite frankly, I think. When I look at it, there's a lot of similarities. In our strategic plan. I look at the wording, I look at, so I think that. I think it, it, it served its purpose. Uh, the CSP, it's, it's given us some direction. Not only this council, last council, council before. Um, I think it's, it's, it's grown somewhat of an attitude. Around when we do our strategic planning around those pillars around, um, you know, without even looking at the CSP. So I think it's, it's served its purpose at the time. Um, and I'm with Mayor Michaels. I think if, if we were gonna do something with it. We should have been done a long time ago, but I think it's gone, gone too far to where I do not think that it, it is viable anymore. I do appreciate the, the words from the intern CAO that uh you definitely would be interested in. You know, that, that part of it, you know, with it being uh connected to the federal grant or to the, to gas tax and things like that. So making sure that it's not something that's going to uh affect any of our grants. That's, that's, that's very important, but. Um, uh, you know, I, 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 my feeling is, is that, you know, I think we've grown past this and uh. I think there's too much work to be done to, to rekindle it. And I think we've got other things that we need to prioritize and do. Uh, you know, along with strategic planning and other matters as well. So um, that's where I'm at with this CSP.
Council of Lard.
So I'd like to make Washington first have a question then. So um. The uh date lines blank. Um, what? Uh, what's a date that it could comfortably uh come back to us?
Thank you, sir. And, and through you to the members of the committee, it could come back fairly quickly. Uh, it won't take long to, to kinda have that investigation, confirm the status of any granting requirements of the Community Sustainability Plan. Uh, further poll some of my colleagues and some other communities on what they are doing with their CSPs. Or may have done with their CSPs and then bring that back. So I, I would suggest this could come back. Late September, early October, if you, if council wishes to deal with it that quickly.
Okay, uh, yeah, I would. Uh, and it's the first one, Jen. Uh, and why don't we say um, uh, report uh. By the middle of October.
So if I could, sir, that kind of the options for council would be October fourth or October eighteen?
October fourth, please. Perfect.
We, I.
Your meeting, you're everyone.
So. Well, I'm just, just a suggestion maybe for wording, if you don't mind.
I would love it.
Do you wanna, do you wanna a motion to rescind the May eleventh, two thousand eleven? A Community Sustainability Plan?
Yep.
Or do you want a motion to rescind the adoption of the Hidden Community Sustainability Plan?
Same place now. That's, that's what I want right there. It's adopted, it's in place, it's just not being used.
If, if I could, sir, the, the language I've used here is because it's not a statutory document. So really, we're looking to rescind that. The adoption, the adoption.
Good, thank you. Anymore?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question, I just wanted to go back to the timing. Um, I have no problem supporting this, but uh. Again, uh, why wait until the first week of October? Does, does administration need that amount of time to prepare that report? Uh, otherwise, if there's an appetite to rescind this, well, I would like to do it as soon as possible if. We're gonna go down.
Well, that's why I asked for it. Right? I just wanted to make sure we're.
So, so administration, is this an extensive report? If, if there's an appetite to rescind. Could, how soon could this be done?
Um. My preference would, uh, my preference would be to bring it. If I could bring it to the September sixth, which is a month earlier. But that would give us enough time to do a couple of these inquiries, inquiries. I don't think, I mean, I'll continue with the report, Debbie, but. I don't think there's anything kind of most of the planning area that specifically affects so this.
So if I may, if I can ask for a friendly amendment to say by uh October second, I, 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 I don't mind giving latitude, but I'd like to for it to be open that. Uh, if it doesn't seem overly extensive, let's just formalize this instead of creating an eight-week. Gap in order to formalize what seems to be the appetite of council.
That's, that's why I wanted the date, because I think we should deal with this as soon as we can.
So, so I'd like to put a friendly amendment to council of America to change or ready to say by October. Whatever the date was, and that gives a latitude to bring this earlier.
Jen, could you put it up so Council of Lard could consider changing it?
No, that's fine. Yeah, report by the October fourth and then, okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I actually have a question about the wording of the motion. The party votes uh with a motion to rescind. I know. Rec, any of the whole, we can't make a direction that has a motion embedded in it. It could be a recommendation or a option to rescind, but it can't be a motion to rescind.
Yeah, I guess that's right.
Change no word motion to recommendation?
I, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's quite fair and, and correct in terms of the intent. Of the committee meetings, so we could change that or I, Jen, even if you were to bring it up. I, I, I almost could foresee something along the lines that the committee direct administration prepare a report by the. October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of council regarding the future of the Hidden Community Sustainability Plan. And that leaves it.
Or just change motion to recommendation. Oh, would you like to change a custom of the barge?
Uh, no, that's good. It's just let's, let's have it be concise, put a period at the end of the sentence and yeah, uh, deal with it when the report comes.
Is that good?
Sure.
Okay, any other comments? Councilor.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the motion. So I'm, I'm fully in support of this motion. And I wanna commend administration for bringing this forward. Because it at least puts it on the table and gives us an opportunity to have a conversation with the community. Uh, regarding their thoughts, they're, they're the ones who, who made the CSP in the first place. So the community has an opportunity to get back to council with feedback. Uh, you know, uh, whether they want to, a revision of the CSP. A different guiding document where they're happy to let it go by the wayside and let our other guiding documents guide councils as we move forward. So. Great opportunity for conversation and uh looking forward to having it come back to us. Thanks. Yeah, uh, and I'll be in support of it as well. And I, I think that also. Uh, this was, actually came from our strategic planning meeting and uh, you know, I appreciate administration bringing it forward. Uh, we identified this as something that, you know, to discuss in the summer months and uh, you know, and it just, again, um. I think it demonstrates that that strategic planning uh session that we did, we've already done. A number of things already. This is just another one of those things that was on the list that I need to, to take care of. So I appreciate it coming this early and. Uh, yeah, I look forward to hearing what the community has to say as well in regards to this. Thank you.
Anybody else? Without, we'll seek consensus. All is in favor of uh the recommendation? Man up first. Thank you. All is opposed? You sure?
Massive.
That is a unanimous uh consent. Okay, that's the reports of administration. With that, we'll move on to reporting. Council reports, boards and committees of council will start with, let's start. Councilor Lard.
Uh. Back on my week and I have nothing to report.
Report, thank you, Councilor Soss. Uh, nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Good, customer decision. Uh, I also have nothing to report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just uh had an introductory meeting with uh. The, our new representative for travel Alberta in our area, uh, James Leppin, uh, who was great to work with us during the green. Designated to another area. So now it's gonna be Christopher Smith. So he's looking forward to meeting all of you. There'll be uh. Uh, opportunities coming, uh, coming in the fall. Uh, so Christopher Smith says hello and is looking forward to working with the chamber, the town of Hinton. Council and uh, and really, uh, there's an emphasis on uh. Developing this, this region. They really see uh. The foothills in the Hinton area. So a potential uh huge opportunity to really increase. Uh, their revenues from a tourism standpoint. So they're, they're looking to uh be aggressive and there'll be more to come from that. Uh, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Well, I got to kind of a follow-up. Maybe you, maybe there's more to come and you can't say much more, but there was a. A big meeting of the visitor center this last week. Are you part of that? Have there any reports on that?
I was not.
Okay. Uh, no, I have nothing to report other than I won't be here next week soon. Uh, then we'll move on to, uh. Did I miss, miss anybody? Chief Administrative Officer reporting?
Thank you, sir. Um, three items just we'd like to, to bring to council's attention, the committee's attention. You're aware and involved with this already. Um, so this week, our consultants for our service level review are. On the ground and here in the town of Hinton and meeting with council members and administration. And gathering documents for the completion of their recommendations of the service level. Review and looking forward to those recommendations as we move into the twenty twenty-three budget process. Um, had a good chance to sit with Rob Daru and uh, and kinda rehash my time at the Wild Mountain this year. I. Quite enjoyed it and uh, Rob was uh, is in the process of uh now promoting the upcoming September tenth autumn festival. So just a reminder to everyone that that's upcoming and a free event here. So please keep an eye for some of the promotion that uh, our communication staff will be pushing out and Rob's busy putting lots of posters up around town. Um, there is a bit of a lingering, uh, and I had received an inquiry just earlier this week. From uh one of council on the status of our restored grant around our transit program. And so uh. And our FCSS department continues to uh work with the uh. With the province and, and with the parties responsible. They have acknowledged that uh we did in fact have a two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty study done that met their requirements that they missed. And so we're still waiting for confirmation, but. All in all, we believe we're gonna be successful with securing the uh. The expected or anticipated numbers of dollars of that restored grant. Now that they've confirmed it. The work necessary to meet that grant has been fulfilled and they're just waiting to get back to us with the updates. Nice.
Okay, um. Just a question, um. There was a. Um, counted an Alberta day uh opportunity. For grants that Mayor Michael sent to us. Do you, do you have an update on that?
Um, not really anything at this time. We haven't to have a chance. Haven't had a chance to take a look at it. I do appreciate. Have a chance. I haven't had a chance to take a look at it. I do appreciate getting it forwarded on, but. We haven't come up with any ideas yet that is with our grants person and uh, I believe we're. Looking at it, but at this point, I haven't heard of anything that we would participate.
Good. Does that complete your service and reporting update?
It does, sir. Thank you.
Okay, now we finished with the open portion of the meeting. And we have a closed session.
Just, oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to move into a closed session.
Okay, all in favor?
Can you have a break?
A break?
Yeah.
Um, okay, we've just come out of camera, I believe, uh, Councilor, uh, Mayor Michael says.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to move, uh, that committee approved. The changes to the draft C O contract. Uh, as discussed in closed session.
There any questions or comments? Yeah, I'd like to call uh the question to uh vote. All is in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that, I believe we're close to adjournment unless.
I move to adjourn.
Ryan LeBarge moves to adjourn. And uh, all is in favor? All opposed? Thank you.